Welcome to the latest edition of the All American Connection for Comcast. And our guest this week is Mayor Ed Neely. Mayor, welcome.
Good morning, Russ. Good to be with you.
Glad to have you. Last week, we featured Dick Hill from the City Council. As we always do, we rotate amongst the mayor and the administration and the City Council. This week, I thought we'd talk a little, Mayor, about some of the calls that you get and how people get in touch with the administration for city services.
Well, right, Russ. Of course, one of the easiest ways, if you've got time, is just drop by City Hall and the door's always open. We're there to serve the citizens and they're always welcome at any time. If you're not able to come to City Hall to voice your concerns or get your question answered, all you have to do is pick up the telephone and call me or call Darrell Smith, our chief operations officer, and one of the two of us will get your problem handled right away.
Good. What are some of the most common calls that you get on a daily basis?
Well, it would be hard to say. They cover the spectrum. Goes all the way from drainage problems to dogs, garbage, neighbors, you name it, we get it.
Well, if, say, for example, if you have a dog barking in the middle of the night, who should you call?
Well, when you have something that's a disturbance like that, all you need to do is just call 911, explain to the dispatcher what your problem is, and they will dispatch a police patrolman to the address of the barking dog and the owner will be politely asked to please restrain his dog and keep him from barking.
What about, say, loud music? And I know neighbors usually hate to turn in neighbors out of fear of retribution or something.
Well, of course, most people do, but there are things that bother them like loud music. And the city has an ordinance that prohibits loud music and noises that disturb your neighbor. There again, you'd call 911 and the dispatcher would dispatch a patrolman to the address of the offender and he would be politely asked to cut the volume down and then most of the time, that solves the problem.
Now, what about, say, potholes or streets that have issues? What, who would you call on something like that?
Well, actually, you know, with potholes, they would be attended to by the Public Works Department, but because of scheduling and prioritization and things like that, we'd ask people to call me or Darrell Smith and we would work through the Public Works Department and get the work scheduled as quickly as possible and get the matter attended to.
Now, I know you told me earlier that when you get a lot of these calls, you have a policy on responding to those calls.
Oh, absolutely. I return every call that I get before I go home that day. And the only thing that would keep you from getting my return call would be that you're not there when I call you back.
Okay. Now, if I did call the mayor's office, for example, and I had an issue with the Public Works Department, do I have to hang up and look up the number for Public Works?
Oh, no. If it's something that, you know, just a matter of getting them to handle the problem, we would just transfer you to the appropriate person with Public Works and they would take over from there and take care of your problem.
So the departments are interconnected?
Absolutely.
By phone?
Yeah, all connected by phone.
And I understand the city has a website?
Yes, we do. And a lot of people find that useful. There's lots of information on the website and we work real hard to try to keep it all current so it'll, you know, be up to date.
Okay. Well, this program is designed to enhance communications between the administration, the council, and the community. And Mayor, I think you've helped us a little bit today understand how we can better communicate through.
Well, great.
And from what you said, the door is always open?
Absolutely.
And the phone is available to call the mayor's office if you don't know what direction to go to get information on?
And I'd encourage people not to be bashful. If you have a problem, please call because that's what we're there for, is to serve the citizens. The citizen is our first and only customer and the person that we want most to please.
Very good. Mayor, thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Russ.
This is the All American Connection. Next week, we'll feature a representative from the City Council, so stay tuned. I'm Russ Wilson for Comcast.
Good evening to all of you in the audience. Again, we have a regular, a rather large crowd tonight. Attendance is picking up at council meetings. Those of you at home also, good evening and welcome to the October 3 regular session of Tupelo City Council. Before we begin the meeting this evening, we've asked Reverend Larry Hill of First United Pentecostal Church to lead us, to give the invocation, and then Nettie Davis will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for another wonderful and beautiful day that you have given us. We pause to thank you for your bountiful blessing that you have bestowed upon your people. I pause tonight to thank you for our city, for your goodness and your blessing that you have given to all of us. As our forefathers of old, we recognize our need of you. We recognize we need divine guidance, strength, and help. I pray tonight for the mayor, City Council, every department, the city of Tupelo, that you will strengthen them, give them wisdom and guidance, I pray. Lord, I pray for our nation, leaders of our country. I pray for peace in the world. I pray for those who are less fortunate than we tonight, that you would bless and sustain them. Lead, God, and direct us for all of these things we ask in your divine name. Amen.
Attention, salute, and praise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Hill. Thank you, Nettie. With that, I'll now call the meeting to order, and the first thing we need to do is to confirm or amend the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we need to amend the agenda to add a proclamation and recognition of the Fire Prevention Week. Then we need to add Item 710, the multiracial committee nominations, and then we need to add Item 11, review and pay bills.
Have a second?
Second. Sir, I need to make some corrections. You mentioned last night that you were going to change some on the, the moment and can we do that now or we need to wait?
We can change that later.
Okay, okay.
All right, I have a motion to second. Call of favor, Agent Hall. Proclamations, Mayor Neely. I understand we have one?
Yes. I'd ask Chief Mark Flanagan, if he would, to join me here as I read this proclamation. Whereas cooking, heating, and electrical fire represent three of the nation's leading causes of home fires and are collectively responsible for nearly half of all home fires and almost one-third of the associated fire deaths. Whereas the vast majority of home cooking, heating, and electrical fires can be prevented by taking simple safety precautions. And whereas developing a home fire escape plan and practicing yet at least twice a year are critical to escaping a fire safely. And whereas proper installation, testing, and maintenance of smoke alarms are a part of thorough home fire escape plans. Whereas by preventing the leading causes of home fires and by developing and practicing a thorough home fire escape plan, people can greatly reduce their risk to fire. And whereas the Fire Prevention Week 2016 is preventing cooking fires, watch what you eat. And whereas the fire service of the city of Tupelo is dedicated to the safety of life and property from the devastating effects of fire. And whereas the numbers of fire services yawned by other concerned citizens of this city as well as other emergency service providers and safety advocates, businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in their fire safety efforts. Now therefore, the City Council and I, Ed Neely, and Mayor of the city of Tupelo, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8 through 14, 2006, as Fire Prevention Week. This week commemorates the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, which killed more than 250 persons, left 100,000 homeless, and destroyed more than 17,400 buildings. I call upon the people of the city of Tupelo to participate in fire prevention activities at home, work, and school, and to take the steps needed to make their homes and families safe from the leading cause of home fires, which include cooking, heating, and electrical. And witness here, I have set my hand this third day of October of the year 2006.
Mayor. I don't see any Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. How about recognition of city employees? None? Public recognitions? Are there any public recognitions in the council?
I have one. I serve on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, and I'd like to recommend, well, give accolades to that committee for the outstanding job that they do. Recently, September 6, in Arlington, Virginia, they received the Shining Example Award. There were two groups receiving it, and Tupelo was one of the groups. The Tupelo Convention and Visitors Bureau won Festival of the Year, Category One, attendance below 100,000 for this year's Everest Presley Festival and 50th reenactment. So I'd like to congratulate the Convention and Visitors Bureau and just put a plus in the many things that we in Tupelo do. I think they had a recognition, a local recognition on last week at Benjamin, and it was very nice. And I'd like to also mention, since I'm working with this and I'm chairing this, we're having a community forward festival down at Country Park, and we'd like for all of the city to participate in this dream, good relationships between the police and the community. 3 o'clock at Country Park and parade at 2 o'clock, so we'd like for you to participate tonight.
Ms. Davis, how long, how many years have you been doing that?
This is my seventh.
Second.
Yeah, along with, it's, 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 it's an idea that I developed, but the police and the community worked very hard to make this a success. It's free to the public.
What, what, any assessment, any? The date?
Uh, I don't know. The six.
Over the six?
The sixth of the month.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Yes, and our congratulations, CVP, as a national award, Tupelo ought to be proud to, of the Convention and Visitors Bureau to receive that recognition. With that, we close the regular meeting, go into public agenda, and the first item is public hearings. And the first item is determination to clean private property. Is there anybody in the audience that is here to address the council in regard to cleaning of private property? Don't see any. Next item is citizen hearings. And the first item is ordinance for pit bull dogs. And I think Terry Woody, Robert Mosier, could you come forth and address the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to relinquish the rules to allow one additional speaker tonight and with this item. I'll make a motion in that.
Second. Motion to second?
Glenn, do you have that person's name? I did not get that name. There was one additional person that wanted to speak, Stephen King.
Any comment from the council? Call of favor, raise your hand. Okay, if you come forward, you'll have five minutes. And Mr. Ryan over here is the timekeeper. He'll raise his hand when you've got one minute left. So when he raises his hand, you know you're getting close.
I can talk hours on this subject, and I will do my very best to do it within five minutes. Mr. Mayor and the City Council, thank you for giving us this opportunity to come talk to you. My name is Terry Woody. I'm with the Mississippi K9 Coalition and a longtime member of Tupelo Kennel Club, and we're here to talk about your proposed pit bull ban. We, as a group, support reasonable and enforceable nondiscriminatory laws to govern the ownership of dogs. We believe that dog owners should be responsible for their dogs. We strongly oppose any legislation that determines a dog to be dangerous based on his specific breed. We believe that enforcing the current leash laws in the city of Tupelo would be beneficial to all the citizens of Tupelo. In your books that I gave you, and I gave you plenty of homework to look at, you'll find several articles supporting our views. The first being the article in the Jackson paper regarding the Brandon City Council and Mayor have just recently rescinded their pit bull ban, and they are working very closely with the Brandon Kennel Club and the Mississippi State Kennel Club and Mississippi K9 Coalition to come up with an alternative ordinance that would help all of the citizens and not just ban one breed. Also in your book, you will find a Supreme Court decision that was, that was early part of this year. It was Telling's versus Toledo, Ohio. And basically, the summary on that, the defendant owned three pit bull dogs, and he was convicted in municipal court for violating city ordinances limiting ownership to only one pit bull per household and violating statute requiring owner of a vicious dog to provide liability insurance. On appeal, the court held that the statute requiring an owner of a pit bull to provide liability insurance was unconstitutional. Further, the statute which provides that the ownership of a pit bull is prima facie evidence of the ownership of a vicious dog was unconstitutional because after hearing evidence, the trial court found that pit bulls as a breed are not inherently dangerous. Thus, the court held that RC 955.11 and all the little things behind it is unconstitutional since it has no real and substantial relationship to a legitimate state interest. I've also included position statements from the American Kennel Club, the American Animal Hospital Association, the American Humane Association, the American Veterinary Medical Association, and the National Animal Control Association. I've also given you a wonderful little test, a game in there to find the pit bull. There are 20 different breeds of dogs on those pages, and Ms. Malden and Thomas know the answer to that question, but I won't tell you unless you ask me. We would appreciate getting the opportunity to talk, to, to work with you, with Mr. Mitchell in drafting an ordinance that would be agreeable to all the citizens in the city of Tupelo. We would also like to be able to bring to the schools, safety around dogs. The American Kennel Club supplies these at no cost to the schools, and we would love to be able to put that program on for you. There is, I'm getting ready to, I'm going to relinquish this to Bob Mosier. He's going to go over the economic impact, and I did want to bring, I'm talking fast. In today's paper, the legal notice from Shannon, if you had a chance to read it, it is dangerous dog ordinance, not breed specific. And we would just like the opportunity to do the same thing here.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Yes, I'm Bob Mosier. I'm a charter member of the Tupelo Kennel Club. For 13 years, I was their treasurer.
Right.
I've tired of it. I've also been past show chairman. What I'm going to address this evening with you is something that perhaps doesn't get considered in your basic thoughts of legislation, is the impact this breed-specific legislation could have on the financial aspects of Tupelo and kennel clubs, et cetera. The full report is in the binder that Terry gave you. For three days during the second weekend in May each year, the Country Classic is held at the Bancorp South Center. The visitors who are here are very complimentary, not only at the Bancorp South Center as a site, but the hospitality that they receive throughout the community, hotels, restaurants, and shopping. It is sponsored jointly by the Tupelo Kennel Club and Golden Triangle Kennel Club. We are each nonprofit corporations, and we are sanctioned by the American Kennel Club to put on these shows. Since the formation of the Tupelo Kennel Club, we have been able to provide the city of Tupelo and the surrounding areas many obedience training classes. We have donated a canine vest and training equipment to Tupelo Police Department, right here in this new council chambers. We have also made a donation to Mississippi State University School of Veterinary Medicine, several thousand dollars, to help fund the new oncology department. Based upon figures provided by the Bancorp South Center, a total of 7,000 people visited the Bancorp South Center for these three shows. The average, the average between 850 and 900 dog entries per day. Entries have come from 32 states and Canada. We figure that 82% of these entries were brought by their owners. 18% were professional handlers. Sally and I go to almost all of the shows for our dog. We use a professional handler, so we would fall into that 18%, but we are there. Those statistics for six years are also included in the binder. We estimate that 10% of the 7,000 people are day visitors and 90% are out-of-town visitors. The Convention and Visitors Bureau estimates that day visitors spent $50 a day. Out-of-town visitors spend $130 a day. This brings an estimated $854,250 into the Tupelo economy for these three shows. If breed-specific legislation is passed in Tupelo, it will impact our entries. We already know from emails that we receive from AKC judges and exhibitors from across the country that this pending legislation.
Excuse me, yeah, one minute.
Thank you. Breed-specific is, is passed, it will not enter, it will not enter the Country Classic. Even a 5% drop in dog entries will reduce or produce a revenue loss that the two kennel clubs will not be able to continue to sponsor dog shows in Tupelo. Both kennel clubs will be forced to find an acceptable site in another city, or if we cannot find that, the American Kennel Club will not be able to allow us to continue to sponsor shows. Tupelo Restaurants, Hotels, Gas Stations, Retail Stores will lose the $854,250 that would have been spent during the Country Classic dog shows. The city of Tupelo will lose the taxes from that, from those purchases. In addition, Tupelo will be exposed to approximately 2/3 of the states supporting this show with a negative reputation toward the sport of showing dogs. We respectfully request you to table proposed ordinance, change of adding Chapter 6 and Article Number 6, examine the document to make it one that will protect the citizens of Tupelo and its visitors from vicious dogs and irresponsible dog owners without being breed-specific.
Thank you, Ms. Mosier.
Mayor Neely, Tupelo City Council, good evening. My name is Stephen King. As a veterinarian in our community and a co-owner of Tupelo Small Animal Hospital, I felt obligated to express my thoughts about the breed-specific legislation regarding the ban on pit bulls in the city of Tupelo. I'm concerned that breed-specific legislation will unfairly penalize those owners who have taken the time and properly, to properly train and socialize their pet. We should not penalize, we, we should penalize negligent owner, not the breed. We all know that you either like dogs or you don't. For those that don't like dogs, this ordinance makes perfect sense. However, for those of you on the City Council who are dog lovers, imagine how you'd feel if your dog's breed was banned because of other irresponsible owners. I've had pit bulls in my office as patients that I would trust with my children any day. I've had chow-chows, bulldogs, rottweilers, and many other breeds that I wouldn't trust around my children at all. In these cases, we must hold the responsible, and we must hold the owner responsible, not the breed. My understanding is this ordinance was prompted by the animal shelter's overwhelming demand to house confiscated dogs that are considered to be pit bulls, and with the constant complaints that the unruly dogs of our City Council must contend. My proposal at this time would be to table the present ordinance and investigate other options that would not be as offensive and unfair to the responsible dog owner. Let us consider funding and enforcing our present animal control laws before we make more laws. Aggressive legislation that would make the owners responsible for their pet's behavior and a vicious dog law would be an excellent solution to this serious problem. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dr. King. Next, next item is 52B ordinance, re-pit bulldogs. Mr. Smith, Hunter Smith. You'll give your name and address? Again, you have five minutes as well.
Yes, sir. My name is Hunter Smith. I live at 812 Oak Ridge, Tupelo, Mississippi. I'm nervous, very nervous, so it's very weak. I've lived down the street from Thomas my whole life. Me and Mike grew up going to church together. Pit bulls, by nature, I've had them my whole life. I've got one now. They are not mean dogs. They're very loyal. They're very good dogs. I'm in the process of putting together information for every one of y'all that the AKC did, that I found on the internet, positive information about pit bulls. I'm asking y'all respectfully to table this matter so that we can do more research. I've got a meeting next week with Terry at the Humane Society on Tuesday night as far as, you know, the pit bull owners paying for the animal shelter to do a temperament test to make sure that this dog is, that our dogs aren't aggressive, aren't going to hurt people. When I moved into Tupelo, I took my dog to the five houses on each side to introduce myself and introduce my dog because I know that pit bulls do have a bad reputation, but that's because of irresponsible people. It's not because of the dog. I would just like this table, I mean, this matter to be tabled so that we could do more research and so that we could come to a conclusion. Maybe a vicious dog law. I mean, there's a, there's a wiener dog lives two doors down that I have nightmares about because it's just, it's a vicious dog. It really is. My dog is scared to death of it. You know, I, when I walk my dog, I go to the right to avoid the dog. There are, there are irresponsible people, and there are people that are mean to these dogs. That needs to stop. Definitely needs to stop. We need to enforce the laws that we have now, but I think it would be, I think, you know, we're intelligent enough to know that a dog by nature is not evil. I don't believe that the Lord created anything that by nature is evil. Even snakes aren't just evil. But anyway, I just, I'm doing everything I can. And just like, this thing has come up so quick, and I'm in college full-time, and I'm spending the rest of my time working on this, but if we had more time to, to do more things and to do more research and find out if this, if these animals really are vicious by nature, I believe that, I know for a fact that it would not come that way. You know, if y'all could meet my dog, you know, y'all would know that they're not vicious by nature. And, and Bonnie, she's a member of my family. She sleeps in the bed with me. I take her almost everywhere I go. Man, I just, I, you know, I'd be heartbroken if I had to, if I had to give her up. I'd probably end up moving if she ended up me. I'd probably end up moving, to be honest with you. But, you know, I believe in the city, I believe in the city council, and I just hope, pray that, that we'll be able to come to a conclusion on this that, that makes everybody happy instead of breed-specific banning. I'm not going to take anyone else's time off. Thank you very much.
Well, if you were nervous, Hunter, you did just fine. With that, we'll close the public agenda and return to the regular session, and the first item is six point one, review and act on affordable housing committee recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I talked with the chairman of the Housing Commission, and we were unable to get anything set up before this meeting, but next Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday of next week at four o'clock in the afternoon, if the council could meet, and we'd have to know by, by the press, but the committee, they picked the committee members that could meet with us and go over everything to give us a better look at what the Housing Commission came up with, and that's where I am. I just need to know one of those dates. They've reserved both dates, and it's just a matter of getting us here at four o'clock Tuesday or Wednesday of next week.
I want to address a question to Guy, is trial in Oxford on redistricting Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday of next week, and do you know what time we, we'd be back?
The, the court will be in session from about nine-thirty in the morning to about five-thirty in the afternoon for the length of the trial. I anticipate trial in three days.
That's the only hiccup I could see there.
Okay.
And it doesn't involve everyone on the council, but it does involve some members.
Would it be possible to move it to the following week, Carol?
The following week, it would, they won't be able to get them all together? Well, really for the next three weeks other than next week. Now, we might could work on another day.
Try another day.
Another day. What about, if you, you feel like you'll be in court Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
How many council members would be involved each day? One or two of us, or?
Yeah. There are approximately three council members plus yourself, or four, that would be involved on at least one of those days.
And we'd all be there at the same time? It wouldn't be alternate days? Don't know. I understand.
It's been so hard-
It's hard to anticipate.
Yeah.
It's been so hard to work this out, because those committee members are so busy, and it just worked out that the majority of the ones that would be making the presentation next week is good. We just chose us, I could go for Friday maybe, and, but I know most people don't like to meet on Friday afternoon.
Let me suggest you go for Wednesday, and hopefully some of the council members will be through. Some of us may have to miss it, but you may, that's a suggestion.
Let's go for Wednesday at four o'clock, if that's okay.
Could we possibly do it at a later time, six-thirty or seven, if, seven o'clock, say?
Church Wednesday.
Uh-huh.
Tuesday night, Wednesday. Tuesday night?
I won't be able to meet Tuesday night.
Pardon?
I can't meet Tuesday night.
I would anticipate some of the council members to testify. They testify on Tuesday or Wednesday morning, they can come home. So, you know.
So, let's just, Thomas, can you make it on Wednesday at four o'clock? Okay, I'll notify them and have them to be prepared for. And we'd meet here in the council room.
Yeah, well, I'm in the same boat, so, so I wouldn't be there either, but that's-
Would it be okay then if, if we went ahead and then they sat down with you and went over just the highlights? Okay.
Well, maybe if there, those of us who couldn't be there at four, if, if we could all do, you know, be included in that, if we aren't able to be-
You can, you can-
Because I, I think this is so important, I don't-
It really is, and the chairman of the committee has just gone a lot lately, and he told me the next two weeks, or almost three weeks after next week, he would be out so much.
We, I would say-
Let's just try to work for Wednesday at four o'clock.
Okay. Is that agreeable with the rest of the council? Okay, see, what do we need to do? We need to-
I'll get with Glenn.
Okay, as far as addressing this, I have agenda. We need to table this, just no motion, just no action. Okay?
Or you defer, and then I will-
It's just no action, just no action.
Just no action. And then come back up on the agenda.
Okay, is that, I need to show hands if that's agreeable with the council? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Next item, six point two, review adopt ordinance, amend and code of ordinance regarding ownership of dogs commonly known as pit bull dog.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion at this time that we table this issue until we have time to study it. I'd also, in my proposal, like for us to form a committee from both sides, so to speak, of this issue, to formulate a, an ordinance that would be acceptable to both parties. Second.
Have a motion and a second? Discussion, comment?
I would like to say that-
If you table in the-
Oh, that's right, there is no-
If you table the item, there's no discussion.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, next item, six-three, review approve selection of engineering firm for phase four of the major thoroughfare program.
Mr. President, just to clarify to those present what was just decided, I'm not sure that everyone understood that.
Okay, let me back up a little bit. We're going to have a committee, form a committee to, and we might ask, do we, a three-member committee from the kennel club or the representing dog owners to, to meet with council, is that what you have in mind, to meet with three or four members of the council?
That'd be-
Is that, okay, if you will, we do have a dog problem in Tupelo, we're going to have to address it. So, if you select maybe three or four members from your, from your group that can work with the three or four-member council committee to work out a solution how to address a serious dog problem. Okay, is that, you had mine, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, review approve selection of engineering firm for phase four of the major thoroughfare
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to encourage this council to please do the right thing and support this committee.
We need a motion first, Ms. Davis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course, I, I make the motion.
To, to do what?
To, to support the selection of the committee.
Okay, a motion to support selection of the thoroughfare committee's recommendation.
Yes.
Have a second. Second, second by Mike Bryant. Discussion?
I would just like to say that I would so encourage the, the council to make the right decision and support this committee. I am sure that either one of these firms can do the job, that's not the issue tonight, as I see it. The issue, the greater issue is how will this be perceived in five years when we come back to our community for support of this project? It's the most successful project that Tupelo has ever had, and it's been successful because politics has not been a part of it during this period of time, and, and that's, we'd allowed that to occur during this process. I, I would just encourage the council to please support the committee's recommendation, because without citizens committees and without the support, Tupelo would not be what it is today, and I think it is, it is just a terrible thing if we cannot support our citizens committees. And I, I, that's, I'm just concerned about the message this, this sends to our community that we don't value input from our citizens.
Further comment, discussion?
Major thoroughfare is an asset to our city with the citizen volunteer committee. There is no way that a part-time council can micromanage everything that these committees do. It is very important that the best available qualified citizen be appointed to these committees, and that the committees provide the council with the best available unbiased recommendations. However, I do not think the council should rubber stamp everything that a committee does. The committees are accountable to the council, just as the council is accountable for the voters of the citizens of Tupelo. There is no reason the recommendation of a committee, the recommendation of a committee must meet the smell test before approved by the council. Each committee, each committee must respect council members, be completely and honest with each council member. It is sad that a model project such as the major thoroughfare has been subject to controversy over the past weeks. Five years ago, I'm not aware of a problem. What happened this time? It is important that the issues be addressed so that it does not happen again in the future. One thing that the council should look at is the appointees to the committees. I serve as a deacon at First Baptist Church, I serve on other committees. Banks, corporations, and other committees have a similar policy that when a committee member serves on a committee, that that person rotates off for one year after their term. I think the council needs to consider having a similar policy like that. One of the main purposes of a committee is to keep politics out of the process. When the committee members serve over and over for a period of time, they get comfortable on that committee, and it can become their committee, their project, but it's the citizens' project. The immediate problem at hand is what to do with this committee's recommendation. I'm convinced that the council needs to approve this committee recommendation. We are setting a dangerous precedent if we micromanage and make decisions that should be made by the committees. This will come back and haunt us if we go ahead and override this committee. And I do want to say, this is a difficult thing. It's, my phone is ringing off the wall, and that this is bad, and it shouldn't have never got this far. I fault the committee for it getting this far to this point. So, committees need to realize they've got to answer to us, and they have, it's got to pass the smell test.
Further comment, discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment at this time. First of all, I'd like to express my appreciation to the major thoroughfare committee. I've supported it from its conception. Also, would like to, in my opinion, politics has been involved in this matter since the outset of the selection process, and I don't think that the public's opinion in five years will be affected whatsoever with the simple selection of the engineer for the phase four. Thank you.
I think the, the public-
I have a comment.
Okay.
Ms. Davis?
I have a comment, a few comments. Each week, each, every time we come to the council meeting, we stand up and pledge to the flag, do the pledge, and one of the things in that pledge is justice. And I, I have really thought about my oath that I took when I became a council, councilwoman this time and the last time, and I promised to be supportive and represent the citizens of Tupelo. The citizens have entrusted me, and I felt like running for councilperson, I was capable, I was intelligent and able to make a decision without any pressure placed on me. I know that the, this, this position that I possess is a political position, but I feel that in doing a democratic process, I have a right to make a decision and shouldn't be criticized. I promised the community that I would do this. We have been accused of being criticized for taking a vote. I don't know about anybody else on this council, but I can promise you, every decision that I make, I confer with God, and you may not want to hear that. I pray open, and I make my decision, and I can sleep at night. I don't, there are some things that are important to me about the score sheet. I have studied all of the materials, just as I did when I was teaching school, and I think I have come to a conclusion on this. I don't feel like if I make a decision that's not in accord with what some of you feel that I should be criticized, because you put me in this position to represent all people in Tupelo. So, at this time, I, I just wanted to express this, and it's very hard to try to, to work for the whole city of Tupelo when you're getting all kind of pressures placed on you, and as a result, it's hard to even come to a decision. I would just like for you to be considerate of that. I do feel that the council is, is the voting power of this city, and we are the ones responsible to the citizens. I, I respect the committees, I think they've done an excellent job, but they are not accountable to the citizens, and when I say citizens, it's all citizens in the city of Tupelo.
Anyone else? Any further comment, discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to have one other comment if I could. I'd like to say that if, if you've read the recent articles, that it has expressed concern about pressure from a particular firm, Cook Coggin, I have not received pressure. I have received pressure, even to the point of almost threats from friends supporting ESI. I also made a recommendation to the selection committee and have mentioned to all the council that we, if, if we chose to support ESI, that we'd negotiate the almost quarter million dollars difference in fee, which is appropriate, and have gotten no response, that's fallen on deaf ears. I could not support throwing a quarter million dollars of the taxpayers' money out the window without negotiating for that difference. Thank you.
Further comment, discussion?
Let me make one comment. But still, in response to Mr. Vaughn's recommendation there or comment, I believe the principles of ESI did suggest they would negotiate downward towards the other part, and I don't know if any officials think, but they have indicated to me they would do that.
Not aware of that, sir. Pardon?
Mr. Patterson, chairman of the selection process committee, told us when he gave us instructions of how the process went, that it was not either appropriate or ethical one to negotiate the price after someone has gone to all the work and expense to do the right thing, do the fair thing. You've got to do it the first time, or you won't have any, any competition. And I'm, I'm opposed to this, of negotiating after the fact. You do your best price upfront, honest, fair, no cheating, no favoritism, and that's the way I feel.
Further comment, discussion?
I do think according to the schedule that they showed us, though, that price was not the primary consideration.
That's true.
That there were other considerations based on the way it was looked at.
But consider, I was in the insurance business thirty years here in Tupelo, and of course, I had a great allegiance to the, the business community that permitted me to serve them, and when a person spends a lot of time and energy and tremendous expense to, of course, we, we would call it proposal, because in the insurance business, it's just like the engineering professional services, and it's just not fair after someone really gets out there and tries hard to do the right thing, to turn around and let somebody renegotiate. Now, how would it make you feel? I'm saying it's not right- I'm saying it's not right, it may not be against the law, but it's not right, and it eliminates competition. And I'm totally opposed to it on moral grounds, and I think it's on ethical grounds.
I'd like to call a question.
I'd like to make a comment, if it's okay. Since I reserve my comments, that everyone else is through, I would like to have opportunity to comment.
Point of order, Mr. President. Mr. Mitchell, would you clarify what has happened on the floor?
When someone moves for a question, a call for a question, that should, you should ask whether or not there's a second to that, sort of a call of the question. And then a vote should be taken on whether or not the question is called, which would cut off debate if that motion is successful.
How second, her motion? Karen's motion? All right. Comment? You've rendered one of your council members voiceless in the council presence.
I will rescind my call. I'm just trying to bring to a vote.
Understood.
Let you speak. If you'll recall your second, if you'll recall your second.
Well, I think we should stick to what we're doing. We're getting completely crossed up here in.
Yeah.
I think the motion was made and seconded. We can get a vote on it. If it fails, then if a party passes, we have to stop.
All in favor of the motion? Pardon?
She rescinded the motion.
She rescinded the motion, okay.
To cut off the debate, cut the discussion.
I rescinded my motion to cut off the debate.
All right. Mr. Heffner refuses to rescind his second. What's the precedent for that?
No longer have a motion.
Okay, the motion.
So you can speak, Till.
I hate politics in government. I don't even like to be called a politician. I see politics in government, national and state level, hinder progress and kind of repugnant to me. Thoroughfare planning committee, major thoroughfare planning committee was initiated by citizens, financed by citizens, administered by citizens, and overseen by citizens. It has a tremendous track record, you can't deny the track record and success major thoroughfare program has had and the impact it's had on this community. I am very reluctant, at this point, to have government politics interfere with that successful process, program. And I, I will approve, vote to approve the recommendation of the thoroughfare planning committee. Okay? On through?
Do we have another reason or motion?
Yes.
Now, you want to make call a question? All right, I'm ready. Is there any further comment or discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. That's four. Opposed? Two, three, four, five. Motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, the way this has been handled, I now offer a motion to the floor to go to the lowest bidder on this project, which would be Cook Coggin. Do I have a second?
A second.
Who's your second? Discussion?
At this time, I would like to say something. I hadn't said anything before. This has been one of the most controversial things that I've ever been involved in the entire time I have ever served on this city council. And this major thoroughfare program is close to my heart because I was on the Board of Alderman when it was established. And we did a lot of hard work to get it into effect. And when we look at, we said here that we've got two firms, and both of them are qualified firms. And we've also said that we're looking at the taxpayers' dollars to save money. And I know I've been told everything about this project, and the paper hasn't been too kind to us about the articles that's been written. And you know, when we're elected, we are elected to a tremendous responsibility, and you're not going to please everybody with what you do. You're going to make some folks mad and you're going to make some folks happy. And as a council member, it's all in who you're talking to that day of how people feel. And we all around this council come from different lords and different walks of life. So we're thrown with different people. Some people that you talk to is for this. You get many phone calls, people telling you how to vote that hasn't served on the committee or anything, and hasn't looked at any material that you've had to read and study. And because of the way this situation was handled, I've had to do a lot of hard work night and day, looking up engineering contracts and reading them to see in my mind how things were done. And for that reason, that's exactly like the reason I feel like I do today about this project.
Further comment, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if you would indulge me a moment, this has become highly energized and I just pray that tomorrow morning, we'll, before leaving for bed, I'll be free.
Oh, sure.
But we have to let our own conscience guide us. And sometimes, you know, your life experiences may be different from mine. But I've got a prepared statement I would like to read, and I hope it won't take too long, but this has really been a hard decision because I wish we could vote unanimously all the time, but we're living in the real world. We've got to make decisions that we can live with and go to bed at night and sleep really good. I'm going to read my statement. "We, the council, highly regard the volunteer spirit in Tupelo sincerely. It has been published that a dollar value to government is 20-plus dollars per hour of time contributed by volunteers." I think that value is too low. I think it's hard to really put a value on how important volunteerism is. And the Tupelo spirit will prove that. "The major thoroughfare program is an envy of other cities as well as, as was brilliantly conceived by previous council in August of 91. During the Mississippi Municipal League in June of this year, many people that I encountered praised our program, and some of them are trying to emulate this program. We are indebted to the major thoroughfare, past and present. The city council has the ultimate responsibility and take what we're doing very serious. We sworn a Bible before Judge Davis, Glenn Davidson, to uphold the laws of our great state of Mississippi. We trust that this committee and the citizens of Tupelo will respect our decision tonight because everyone has had a really difficult time with this decision, and the council has been under extreme pressure the past two weeks to go against our conscience and the wisdom we've attained, hopefully wisdom, through living many years on this good earth. We're accountable to the citizens as elected officials, and we must put all citizens first. We appreciate the zeal of this major thoroughfare committee, of great people. I know every one of them. This process has been highly energized by a prepared statement read by President Hill at the last council meeting, saying that this council desires to interfere and even take over the major thoroughfare committee. Nothing could be further from the truth, and Mr. Hill's statement was picked up by the press and the rest of the council decided to do the right thing and take the high road on this issue and not talk and do more harm. As a matter of fact, if the citizens and the council had been given correct information at the last council meeting, we could have voted that night to put it to rest. This bad press that was fed by Mr. Hill's statement and Mr. Mitchell's bad legal advice that the citizens of Tupelo need an explanation as to why this went on. I hope the media tomorrow and tonight on TV will present a positive thing, and the media will, will get us back on the right track. Thank you very much."
Mr. Martin, you have before you comments I made at the last council meeting.
Right.
If you would pick out what you're referring to, I'd appreciate it.
Well, it was, it was pointed out that we, of course, I know what you're trying to do is-
Oh, that's, those are, I read those, that's what I read.
Is humiliate us for taking a stand.
Never mind, just hand it back. You accuse me of saying something, and there's what I said, right there.
Well, I have a copy of it, so I'll-
I just gave you a copy.
Well, I have my own copy here somewhere. But anyway, we were accused of wanting to take over the major thoroughfare program. That was really serious.
All right, I won't press any further, but after the meeting, show me where I said that. I appreciate it.
Mr. President?
I have the tape.
Sir? I'd just like to say that, first of all, I tend to agree that the council has been accused of delaying the project. I think if we can make a decision tonight, that this project can be back on schedule and it will not be delayed. I have asked on several occasions and made the request to you that we can get this back on the agenda. That has not happened. And last week, three other councilmen myself met with Mr. Guy Mitchell. The information that, incorrect information that Bill Spitz possibly could have delayed it, and I don't think it's detrimental to the project. I think we can get this thing back on schedule very easily. But I would give Mr. Mitchell the opportunity to explain that. I think what the letter that we had received, if we did not go along with the recommendation that we'd have to start this process over, which would be a lengthy process, we brought his attention that the proposals went out under John Crawley's signature, the city engineer, and he then said that the procedure would not have to start over. And I don't feel that the project is, the city has been hurt, we're not complete with the other phases, and if we can get this thing on track tonight, after that meeting, and then I'll let Guy explain, after that meeting, Carolyn Malden and I approached Glenda to place it on the agenda, and therefore, we're dealing with it tonight so that we don't delay it any further. Mr. Mitchell, if you would, if you'd explain the circumstances which we-
Well, first, let me say that I'm concerned that Mr. Martin felt that the legal advice was bad. The legal advice that I gave you last time was correct, based on the information that I had been furnished. And I stand behind that opinion and that I gave you two weeks ago, based on that information. Following the meeting, we had a session with several council members at their request, in which I was given additional information, which they did not have available to me at the time that I gave the legal opinion to the council. After reviewing that, it was my opinion that since the engineering proposal, the request for proposals went out over the signature of the city engineer, that that request could be considered the city's request, that you could make a very good case for the fact that the process had been delegated by the council to the committee, but it was the city's proposal. And therefore, if the council chose not to accept the recommendation of the thoroughfare committee, it would legally be appropriate for the council to make its own decision based on the process that had been utilized by the committee.
I would like to say that I'd like to retract that my statement of being incorrect, I think it was at the fault of the mayor's office, the city council, and the thoroughfare committee and the information that we got to you, and that was written according to the information that you had, and I'm in full agreement with that, Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Heffner?
Well, I want to say what most council members have said. I want to thank the thoroughfare committee and the job they're doing, and I hope they're still doing it. And I want to tell you for sure, there's not one ounce of politics in my body. What I'm saying to you is from me and without pressure. There's a number of things that I don't understand about why ESI was chosen. And most, most bids are proposals. You choose the lowest and best bid. Well, four, four or five years ago, when Phase Three was started, ESI was the low bidder. And Cook Coggin was the highest. So the committee chose ESI. This time, the low bidder was Cook and Coggin, and ESI was higher, and they chose ESI. A low bid should play a big and important part when both parties, both companies are qualified. And I don't understand how we ended up like this. And I know, too, that Mr. Hill said it should have never been on the agenda, but he made the agenda. So if there's a mistake made, well, you've got to put the blame where the blame is. But I support the major thoroughfare committee, but I support the services of Cook and Coggin. Because I don't think that, I think we've been threatened by some of the committee that we're going to lose state and federal funds, but nobody has proved that we are going to lose state and federal funds. There are state and federal funds all over this city. It will be, it's right every street you go down, there's state and federal funds in it, and this thoroughfare will be the same. And if somebody knows more than we do, they need to tell us why we'll lose these funds. But I support Cook and Coggin. I think.
But could I say something?
Sure.
Mr. President, if we had have been given the information that week of the last council meeting, that we know now and have now, we would have voted, I feel like, the contract would have been voted on and they could have gone to work wincing that next, very next day. And that's, that's the reason I feel like that we've just not been justly served because, I mean, the statements that were made and the bad information led the public to believe that we were against the program, that we won't take it over. So, I mean, it's in the, I have it here in the information, and I'll talk to it when we get to the minutes, but that's where I'm coming from, and I'll, I'll read that when we get to the minutes.
Any further discussion, comment? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Four against, five for. Motion passes. That was the last item on the action agenda. We'll now, no, no, we've got to remove, review, approve, action, termination, clean private property. So moved.
I think everybody's got a list of the property that was deleted.
Discussion?
I got, I got some changes that should be coming up. Some of these in my ward, and I'm not partial to just my ward, but I want to tell you that number 1314, which is Grant Street, it had been mowed, today it's been mowed, should be removed. Also, is Jesse King here?
No, I didn't see Jesse.
Well, there's two numbers that are confusing to me, 1305, the person, and 1307. It's the property behind, I probably don't need to mention this, but it's property behind the- but it's property behind the Barn Hills and property behind Autozone. The property behind Autozone, and I don't know which one of these numbers is, has been mowed on Van Buren. The property behind Barn Hills has not, but I see the name here.
Crossed out, thirteen oh seven.
Yeah, well, I think it's the other one, but I see the name here of Astor's, and I, I don't see any, either one of those lots out there that are behind Astor's, the chicken place. So, one of these, the north one, the north one, I was hoping Jesse would be here, would need to be crossed out.
On my list?
I'd guess it's thirteen oh five.
Okay.
What do you think?
Well, the one he gave us was thirteen oh seven, which is the one behind Autozone. Yesterday at the agenda review, I scratched on my list, thirteen oh seven.
Okay, well, I had that too, but I don't know why I had it. Anyway, if there's a mistake, well, they'll know it when they recommend, when they get there.
You want to remove thirteen fourteen, you say that's been mowed?
Yeah, thirteen fourteen, it's been mowed.
Okay.
And we need to add one that didn't make the agenda.
I don't know if we can do that, we can't do that?
Well, we've got somebody sitting on it that didn't, Jesse King turned it in to the right person, but he's still holding it. And that's, that's Hill, that's your whole block. He turned it into Darrell Smith, and I guess Darrell, have you still got it?
If it's not on the agenda, I'd be glad to discuss it with you after the council meeting.
Well, he's still got it and didn't turn it in, so that's the reason it's not on here, it's over two weeks ago.
I voted today.
Oh, I want to vote her here.
You must have voted after I came to work, because if there wasn't a vote when I came in, four o'clock.
Okay, it's not on the agenda, we'll talk about it after the council meeting if you wish.
Well, I don't think anybody should be exempt.
Quite of order.
The ordinance that we are proceeding under, which is the cleaning and mowing ordinance, requires that the properties that are to be considered are placed on the agenda and published so that there can be a public hearing, property owners have the opportunity to either clean up the property or come before the council and announce their intentions. So if it's not on the list that has been published and an opportunity to be present, it can't be considered until that's done.
Well, that's a slight way of getting things pushed back.
Okay.
Let's hear them speak, though.
And we move on.
All right.
All right, any further discussion, comment? All in favor, raise your hand.
What we're voting on?
To approve the action termination, clean private property with the, we need to add thirteen fourteen, is that right?
Right.
Okay, if whoever made the motion, would they amend their motion to add thirteen fourteen?
Ammonize thirteen.
Yeah, take it off. Who made the motion?
I made it.
Take which one off? Thirteen fourteen, Mr. Heather says that was mowed today.
Take it off.
Give me the second, okay? All right. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? One against. Now we'll move into the routine agenda. Review, approve, minutes, special calls, city council meeting is number twelve, and the regular city council meeting is September nineteenth.
I move that we approve this.
Mr. President, I move that we...
We have a motion.
Have a motion and a second, discussion, yeah. We have a second, don't we? Yeah.
Can we add, is it in order to add to the minutes on page seven? Because I was concerned about the thoroughfare business, why it was all that discussion that went on, apparently, maybe it was out of order, can it be added to the minutes, or Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, you can make corrections to the minutes.
Well, I mean, it, all it mentioned was Mr. Jones' motion and Mr. Heather's second, and it didn't mention the things that led the council to not...
I didn't say.
Well, it says...
The motion, they're up there.
It says here, anyway.
The motion, there was, the motion died for the lack of a second last, that council meeting. There was some discussion after that which should not have been.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, this was on, bring it off the table. Bring it off the table, okay, but then, then it died for the lack of a second, and then that was in the minutes.
Should have been, should have been the end of discussion, but it was not.
Well, I know it, but that's what's bothering me, and I apologize if I may have got too carried away and get personal, but it did permit the things that was, that was in the discussion that went on that was out of order, and I again say, it just looks like we're not getting the good advice that we need, and had that not gone on, we wouldn't be where we are today with bad press and the council looking like they have done the wrong thing. We've been wrongly accused, and we've not had the leadership, and that's one thing, that's one thing, that has really been a two-week tear for this council and this city. And I hate to belabor the point, but just tremendous pressure and insults and ridicule, and I'd like for this to be added, since it went on and has done a lot of harm to this council and been divisive to this council. At the risk of interruption, which I did not do two weeks ago, you have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes, it's been seconded. That motion needs to be acted on, and then a subsequent motion could be made to amend the minutes and add whatever the council member that wishes to add to the minutes, but we need to proceed in that fashion, and the discussion should be on whether or not to, the first motion, which was to approve the minutes.
We can approve the minutes and then add to the minutes, amend the minutes after they've been approved.
With a separate motion, yes.
We need to act on this motion first.
I got a comment to make, I mean, how are you going to approve the minutes when they're not all there?
We're approving what's here.
And then it'll be amended.
And then we're making an amendment to add some additional, is the way I'm taking it.
You could withdraw the motion, the motion is to approve the minutes that's submitted, that was seconded, that's, that is the item of business before the council. All I'm trying to do is just get the truth out as to what has gone on in the past two weeks and all the accusations been made against this body, which have been harmful to our city and to the major thoroughfare program, who are a great bunch of guys, and we were not allowed to vote our conscience. I feel like that what went on in that discussion that was illegal, apparently, or should be part of their minutes. Mr. Martin, the discussion was out of order. The discussion that went on once the motion died for the lack of a second was out of order. No one on the council raised that issue, and I hesitated to interrupt and assert myself into the council's business. And there is an appropriate way and a way under the rules of order of the council to amend the minutes, to add any additional items that a council member, whether it's this discussion that you're talking about tonight or any other, that's the reason the approval of the minutes comes along, so that you can add, delete, modify appropriately if there is information in there that's incorrect or not complete. But you still have a motion before the council to approve the minutes.
We've got to address the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September twelfth and September nineteenth meeting.
You're going to make a motion?
Legal or illegal, this was still in the meeting, and it's a part of the meeting.
Out of order.
Okay.
Call the vote.
Call the vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, now.
One, I need to vote.
It was unanimous, wasn't it?
Yeah.
All right, now you can make the motion to add to the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion that we add the discussion that went on after, after this, verbatim as per, it was recorded.
You are amending the motion.
No, he's making a new motion.
I second, amending the motion.
All right.
Excuse me, you're making a motion to amend the minutes, is that correct?
Motion and second? Okay. Discussion? I, no discussion? I have no problem with that at all, as long as you record accurately what was said and not someone's interpretation of what was said, and I have the tape, I have the tape of the meeting, and I have what I said tonight, okay? Any further comment? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, seven point two, review approve fiscal year 2007 petty cash accounts.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven point three, review approve municipal compliance questionnaire for August first and September thirty. Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven four, review accept minutes of major thoroughfare program meeting of August fourteenth.
So moved.
Motion? Second, discussion.
Mr. President, I do have a question. I have heard comments and read articles about the vote being taken unanimously for the recommendation of ESI eighteen to oh, and I don't know if anyone here is here that could verify that.
Anybody here?
Apparently, there's not somewhat, there's not, that is, I'm not saying that that's an accurate statement by the press this morning, even in the paper again, but the members present at that meeting was twelve, not eighteen, I'd just like to clarify that, what the vote was at that particular meeting, if I could.
Okay.
And Glenda may can get...
Get Glenda to confirm that with her, if there's any sign of a fight. Any further comment, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven point five, review accept minutes of the drainage task force meeting of August tenth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven six, review accept minutes of park advisory board and sports council meeting of August eighth, two thousand six. Motion, second, comment, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven point seven, review accept minutes of planning committee meeting of September eleventh, two thousand six.
So moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven point eight, review award reject bid for CBB two thousand seven hospitality guide.
I move we approve this bid.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Next item, review award reject bid for Haven Acres subdivision channel improvements project.
I'll move, second.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. We have additional item on the agenda, seven ten, review approve the multiracial committee nomination.
I'm with all moves.
Motion, second, mayor meeting, you're in. Discussion, comment?
Mr. President, I'd like for those names to be brought forward, mentioned, if someone would read those, I don't have that list, I'd ask the mayor to read those names out, please.
Names are Reverend Ron Richardson, Henry Cobb, Father Henry Shelton, Georgie Fuller, Dr. Joanne Bailey, Mr. Tommy Ruff, Jackie Jennings, Mr. Calvin R. Smith, Mr. Nathaniel Stone Senior, Bobby Evans, Carolyn Wadlone, Victor Fletus, Tony Rogers, Darrell Beers, Reverend Tommy Galloway, Mr. Tillman Calvert, Eddie Page, Lewis Funtan, Mr. Jack Reed Senior, Mr. Willie Jennings, Mr. Claude Clayton Junior, Ms. Holton Sina Ray.
Mr. President, I'd like just to make mention that I understand that, I appreciate the mayor's office taking consideration to all the council's recommendations in formulating the committee, and I think that's the proper way the committee should be following.
Any further comment, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Last item on the routine agenda is to review and pay the bills, the bills are paid, deceiving by myself, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Heather.
So moved.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Move to the study agenda, review discuss ordinance for comprehensive code enforcement.
Well, we kind of have a work session on that, somebody asked about that.
We should use.
Okay, and you'll notify us, okay?
Yes.
Did what now? Move it up. It will not necessarily have to be moved up until the next meeting, but it could be delayed a little.
Well, we can be, we can mate on it and then add it the next council meeting, so.
Well, yeah.
So move it up. All right. Next one, review discuss ordinance for residential rental licensing program.
Move it up.
There'll be a work session scheduled on that. Items eight point three, review discuss request received to accept dedication of section of Williams Street.
Move it up.
Eight point four, review discuss ordinance requiring mandatory flow of solid waste to Three Rivers. Eight point five, review discuss assessment proposal agreement of National Institute of Ethics.
Move it up.
Move it up. Let's see. One thing I was supposed to remind the council of, what was it, Verdel?
Something I was seeing on.
What was it? Oh, your insurance form, yes, yes, make sure you get your insurance form filled out and turned into Ms. Holton's office. One other thing I'd like to say, if Mr. Heather would like to discuss my vote yard after the council meeting, I would ask Darrell Smith, Lady Pat, and another council interested with us, and I'd be glad to discuss it.
I'm going to make it to the fourth quarter of my dollar soccer game.
Okay. Have motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand.
I can ask you a lot of time, Mark.